Hello and welcome to the City of Cedar Falls Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for Wednesday, March 26, 2025. I call this meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Albrehaski?
Here.
Gribovich?
Yeah.
Hartley?
Here.
Henderson? Johnson?
Here.
Moser?
Here.
Sorensen?
Here.
Stahlnaker?
Here.
Watkins?
Here.
Okay, one absent tonight.
All right, thank you. Looking for approval of minutes or a motion for approval of minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that carries. This is time of the meeting for any public comment for anything that's not on the agenda. I don't think we have anyone tonight, so we just go on to new business, which is a zoning code text amendment for outdoor swimming pool regulations. And Chris has this tonight? All right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Hartley. Good evening, Commissioners. Let me put up on the screen what we got. So, this is in regard to a text amendment to change some standards in the code in regard to swimming pools and the zoning ordinance. Just to kind of get our bearings real quick, what the zoning code typically regulates in regard to swimming pools, it would regulate where a pool can go, what setbacks apply, how big it can be. And typically, there's a fence or barrier requirement to prevent unintended use, and we can talk about that in a little bit. So, we received an application for, well, just to give an idea of why update the ordinance right now, it's because we received an application, a request from Jason Coller at Pool Tech. He's a pool contractor, and he has a client in Cedar Falls who would like a pool installed. This client recently installed a four-foot fence around the rear yard, and our current ordinance requires that a five-foot fence be installed to secure the perimeter around the swimming pool. The amendment Mr. Coller is advocating would provide an exception to the five-foot fence barrier requirement, provided an automatic pool cover is properly installed, which meets ASTM safety standards. And that's the American Society for Testing Materials. It's an industry standard that has kept up year over year and is recognized by building departments and cities otherwise. The other thing that staff was able to look at here, especially since the pandemic, you know, there has been a little more interest in having swimming pools. When the pandemic first hit, a lot of people weren't leaving their houses and needed a little more something to do around their house. And so, we received a lot of requests that year for swimming pools. And it had highlighted a few issues that probably need to be addressed in the ordinance, and this offers us that opportunity to really make those changes that seem pertinent. So, we can talk about that a little bit. You know, the standards right now are located in an obscure part of the code. It's in a exceptions to yard requirements part of the code. It's just a, you know, random section. So, probably the placement in the code is not the best. What we're proposing is for it to be in an accessory use part of the code, which was just established, actually, when we adopted the ADU standards. The current standards don't differentiate between kiddie pools and larger, more standard pools. And so, it's, there's kind of this gray area of when do we apply these standards and when do we not? So, that's something that needed to be clarified. Currently, the, a pool can encroach into a required side yard setback, and it can be two feet from a lot line. And the ordinance doesn't define whether the line, or whether the setback is to the pool's edge or if it's to the deck around the pool, or to the patio around the pool. Pools are currently required to be eight feet from any structure. And so, you know, when people have requested something like a cabana or something like that, we haven't been able to approve those either. Also, the ordinance currently does not address double-fronting lots. So, let's talk a little bit about what the current and the proposed standards are. So, there's a barrier requirement. It's the five-foot fence requirement that was one of the reasons for this application. What we're proposing is to reduce that to a four-foot fence requirement that is consistent with what other cities are doing and also what insurance companies typically require. So, we figured to deregulate in that regard. But also, in lieu of the fence, allow an automatic pool cover to provide that same kind of safety, you know, if that's what they choose to do. And that's something we did, I should mention, staff consulted with the building official who is familiar with these safety standards. And the ASTM safety standard is an industry standard that the building official did find acceptable. Now, the setback, we did talk about the two-foot setback. We're proposing a five-foot setback to the pool deck and a 10-foot setback to the pool's edge. That is also very standard in terms of what other cities are doing. Size limits, that's actually, that's the only thing we're really not changing. The limitations are, you know, as currently defined are what the size limitation is of a detached accessory structure. There's a way to calculate it, but it's essentially 45% of the required rear yard, which in most cases will amount to 900 square feet, but can be up to 1,024, which is the practical limit that's offered in that part of the code. Can it encroach the side yard setback currently? Yes. But what we're proposing is that it must meet the side yard setback if it is in the side yard. So, that's a differentiation there. Does it apply to all pools? That's currently unclear in our code. What we're proposing is to only apply to pools with depth capacity of more than 24 inches. And that's actually something that's defined in the building code as well. And so, it just makes us consistent with them. Does it apply to spas or hot tubs? That's unclear in our current code. And we would say with the proposed code that it doesn't apply to those as long as they have a lid that is closed when not in use. Now, does it address cases with double-fronting lots? The current code does not, but we're proposing that for rear yards fronting arterial streets, that there would be a standard that allows them to be in those yards. An example of that would be Hudson Road or Green Hill Road, where there are a lot of rear yards that are bordering those. A lot of houses don't face toward those roads.
So, Chris, maybe you can explain what a double-fronting lot is?
Yes. Double-fronting lot has frontage on two streets. So, you have, in those cases along Hudson, you have the rear yard facing Hudson, and then they have their local street or their, you know, their neighborhood road that's in front of their house, if that makes sense.
So, in the zoning ordinance, both of those yards are considered front yards because they both front on the street. So, when a double-fronting lot is for lots that have frontage on two parallel streets. So, it's not a corner lot. Corner lot's something different, but two parallel streets. And most of the times, those occur along our arterial streets. But there are other occasions where there's odd lot configurations and there might be a double-fronting lot. But in those particular cases, sometimes those neighborhoods really would be kind of like an odd placement for a pool to be in one of those yards because their neighbor fronts on that same street. So, it was just a way to allow some allowance for those people that had double-fronting lots along arterial streets.
Thanks. The, so, while the catalyst for these code amendments was an application submitted to the city and will provide relief where standards may have been too strict or undefined, these new standards also address some of the pain points residents have voiced in recent years and will make the ordinance easier to administer and enforce. So, with that, these code amendments are being brought forward for initial review and discussion at this time. If the commission is supportive of the general approach, we're taking, staff recommends setting a public hearing for the amendments to be considered at the next commission meeting on the 9th of April. And I turn it back to the commission for discussion.
All right. Thank you very much. I did have a question on your current and proposed slide. It said, for the proposed, it said a four-foot or a cover?
Correct.
You're saying as long as they have that automated cover, they don't need a fence at all?
Correct.
Okay.
I had a piggyback question on that because I was curious about that. You mentioned specifically that a hot tub lid has to be closed when not in use, but I didn't see anything in the code amendment that the pool cover has to be closed. Would we want to include that? Or how do you enforce it? Because the way I read the code is you just have to have it. It doesn't say anything that it has to actually be closed ever.
Yeah, that's a good question. We did have some discussion about that. You know, in terms of enforcing any of those kinds of, you know, stipulations, there's not a lot of ability for us to see, you know, are we peeking over fences to, you know, to see what's happening there?
I guess I was thinking more for, because we do have code enforcement, you know, if someone, if a neighbor is concerned because there is no fence between them and their neighbor who has a pool and their cover is never closed, they're, what if they call?
So, I think that's just how we do enforcement, is if we hear a complaint, then we go investigate and we make sure that they do have a pool cover that, and we remind them that they need to keep it closed. So, I think in the ordinance, we'll look at the language that's proposed, but I think the language says secured. So, when you have, if we don't have it quite right, we'll look at that.
Yeah, I pulled it up, and I don't see anything in there that said secured, so.
Yeah. So, I think it's also, just like anything, it's their liability, and they've got it, homeowner's insurance that's probably pretty strict on that as well. So, you know, if they leave the gate open to the fence, if they, you know, don't cover their pool and somebody, it's in the regulations that they were required to do it, and then it's on them, you know, that they've caused the issue and not. So, they followed our rules and when we issued the permit, and it's up for them to make sure they're following them.
Thank you. And I do see now in here, you do have secured, so I guess I wasn't, I was not thinking that secured means it's then latched and closed. It's just a sign.
Yeah. So, we've talked this through with the city attorney and talked about some of those issues and how far we can really go to babysit people on some of these things. And it's really their responsibility at that point.
I mean, most people that have a pool keep their cover on to keep it cleaner and to keep it warmer because it's, in our climate, it cools down at night. I have a hot tub and we always close it right away. But I do have a couple of questions if I could, if you're done. The setback 10 foot from the pool edge, is that, is that just a minimum? So, if my yard setback happens to be seven, because I'm on a 70-foot lot, for an example, then the pool needs to be at 10?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And in fact, in that case, the pool deck would still have to be seven feet off the lot line. And so,
Right.
You'd probably see the pool's edge be...
Oh, gotcha. Right.
13 feet, you know, whatever it ends up being.
Yep. If I had a five-foot setback, then technically the deck could be at five foot, and then the pool would be, okay. And then, is there anything with the back setback? Because I know we have a back setback on building, but I assume that we can infiltrate clear to the back, or is there, are we doing something that they have to be so far off the back lot or not?
The, so the setback from the back would be the same five-foot and 10-foot setback as otherwise stated, though for a double-fronting lot, as we were talking about before, if it's...
So, the 10-foot rule would apply to the back of the lot as well? Is that...
Correct. I would say for the, for the double-fronting lot, though, if it's an arterial street, you know, in that area, they're required to be 20 feet from that lot.
Just like a normal city lot, you could, you know, you could go, okay.
Right.
And I think it was in Chris's staff report, but the reason that we're concerned about the side lot line is on those lots that have pretty small side lots. And we did have kind of a neighbor-to-neighbor issue with that and a lot of dispute about it when somebody put their pool right on it. And they were worried about drainage, they were worried about a lot of things, and then it was only a few feet from their house. And a lot of activity and noise with swimming pool, like, you know, it's fun and kids are loud. And so, we felt we needed to clarify and make sure that the pools were kind of a little bit spaced out when we have lot lines, side lot lines that are so close together.
Yeah. And it may be an anecdotal story, but somebody actually did move away from their house. You know, they moved because their neighbor had built a pool too close to the lot line, or not too close. Just, it still met the standard. It just, the standard might be a little too liberal right now.
And you found, Chris, that in other, that ours was much, much closer than in any other ordinance that we ever...
No ordinance had a two-foot setback. We were the only ones. So, that was, that was a little bit odd.
I'm a little curious on the side lot and the setback, too. I mean, it seems like we're just saying absolutely never in a side lot. Is that correct?
No.
Even if it's a really large one, or...
If someone has a large side yard, say they have 30 feet between their house and their side lot line, they could definitely have a pool on that side. That wouldn't be a problem. They just can't be in the required side yard, which is that side yard setback. It's that...
Sure. Because if somebody's on the corner and they're facing the, a certain street, you may not have enough in the back, but you've got all this yard on the side. I mean, that sometimes happens.
That would be allowed, though?
Correct.
As long as it meets the 10-foot setback?
Yes. Yeah. We had initially thought about restricting it so it wouldn't be allowed, but we had kind of doctored the language to make it so that it, you know, we weren't going to be too restrictive in that regard.
So, there's a distinction...
Is a building permit required for a pool? Or what's the, or just a land use?
Building permit is required.
It is. What about like...
Yeah, part of that is the...
Is it above ground? Get any sort of inspection?
Above ground does not require a building permit. I should have clarified there.
But if you build a deck around it, then the deck does?
Correct.
If it's a raised deck?
Yeah. Either...
Is everybody clear on the distinction between a side yard and a required side yard? So, the yard definition is if you just have, you know, your front yard is everything between your house and your front property line. The side yard is everything between your house and your side property line, and the same with the rear. When we get into the required, that's what's in the zoning ordinance as required. So, you have to have at least 10% of your lot width is your required side setback. So, you can have more than that. So, in some of these really large lots, you might have really large side yards. But what's required as a side yard is only, you know, 10 feet or something like that. So, you can't put it that close. You can't put it into the required side yard. But if you've got a really big side yard that you can fit it and meet all the setback requirements, then...
Sure. You're saying if I have a 15-foot setback already, because my lot's 150 foot wide, I still have to maintain the 15?
Right.
Correct.
This is just kind of a minimum, but...
Right.
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 So, if you have an above-ground pool and you have a deck built around it, does the deck count as the fencing structure or the barrier? Or you would have to have an additional fence around?
Correct. You would have to have an additional fence around.
Okay.
Around the decking, around that raised pool. And is there a heights requirement for that? Or you can skip the fence if you put a cover on it?
You skip the fence if you have an automatic safety pool cover. So, it's, there's something a little more, it's not just you strap something on the pool. This is a little more involved. And there's a key that's typically involved with these, that, you know, the key switch that, you know, mechanically brings it on to the pool. So, that's an aspect of this.
You typically only see those on below, on, under pools that are below grade because they're very expensive.
Right.
The pool cover itself would probably be more expensive than above-ground.
Yeah. But we're saying if you have a deck around your pool and there's a railing around that, that will not count as the fence or the barrier that you would need to the pool if you have an above-ground pool. Or are we, is that clear?
All these same rules pertain to above-ground versus an in-ground? Are they all the same? That's kind of one of the questions.
Yeah. Or should that be maybe further clarified in the...
So, you're saying if there's a deck and then a railing around the deck?
Right.
If it fully encloses it and it's above four feet, then sure.
Yeah.
That...
That feels like, that should be part of the language, I think. Because I could see how you, someone could misunderstand, do I need to build a fence around my yard or around my pool, you know, or around my whole backyard? Let's say I have it in the backyard if I have that barrier, or will that count? And obviously, if the neighbors agree.
Yeah. And of course, they're going to have to come give a, get a permit, and we're going to explain that.
Sure. Sure.
They'll come in and propose something, and we'll say whether it meets it or not.
Yeah.
What doesn't apply is some of the above-ground pools, you know, you can get this little lattice work that attaches to the top of the pool.
Sure.
That will not count toward this requirement.
Right. It's a built, it would need to be a built, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. So...
If the side of that pool's already four foot tall, though...
I think the idea is that there's a ladder that people can climb in.
Yeah.
And that often is not secured then, so that, that's not a fence that it secures and is enclosing the entire pool then. It's just something on top of the pool, but there's no gate or anything. So, kids can still climb up the fence and get in the pool, just like...
I think it's hard to play, if the jux of the pool safety cover is that kids run around the neighborhood playing hide-and-seek, for example, could fall into an in-ground pool. But it's pretty hard to fall into a pool that's four foot above the ground. You're going to probably run into it, but you're not going to fall into it, which seems a little different. Seems like there should be some different rules for above-ground that, to me.
I could see toddlers not knowing what they're doing climbing the ladder still, though. I don't think it's just accidental. I could see with an above-ground, I mean, still needing some sort of barrier, whether that be a full backyard fence or, you know, you were talking about the, like, the structures, or something that's closed off outside of just the ladder to get into the pool. My thought?
Yeah. I guess I would propose adding that language and saying if you have an above-ground pool and you have a deck built around it, the railing structure maybe could account for the same barrier, the same safety barrier as we're, if we're clarifying that. And then, I guess a couple of things. I think it didn't at least seem clear to me in the language that the fence could be around the property line versus just around the pool. So, I think, you know, obviously, that's something I think is probably understood, but it didn't seem clear in that language. I also think that it would be helpful if we added notes about the gate having to be self-closing or self-latching, to add that language and even having it clarifying like 45 inches above grade where that latch would be. So, for, you know, if we're maintaining that four foot. And then, I noticed we didn't have anything in there about fixed lighting. Obviously, not talking about the string lights that anyone could put up, but if there's fixed lighting, I could see, we could put some language in there about not having glare to the neighbors or if there's, I don't know if, I didn't see anything in the municipal code about just exterior lighting in terms of, I guess, you know, I could see something like that.
So, the zoning ordinance does lack exterior lighting requirements, and it's certainly something on our list when we update the zoning ordinance, that it's a good idea to have exterior lighting standards just in general. How we enforce lighting nuisance is just through our nuisance code right now.
Sure.
So, I don't know if we want to add little lighting standards for every little thing in the zoning ordinance. It'd probably be better to do that as a larger amendment to the code.
Sure. And then just reference it, yeah.
And, you know, in a larger update to the zoning ordinance, right now, we're able, if somebody's got nuisance light that's shining and somebody's, we can enforce that and say, you got to shut that off or reorient it so it's not shining into your neighbor's yard or whatever. So, we have the ability to do that now.
Okay. Sounds good. That's all I had.
I'm not on, there we are. I think it's good that we're talking about this and we want to update this. I don't like the idea of having that or for a fence versus a pool cover. I feel like the pool cover is an additional layer protection, and I still feel like we need that fence. And I was looking at some of the federal stuff that they have out there. And I know you said insurance standards are one, you know, the four-foot fence is the minimum standard. I feel like that's low. When I've seen kids and how they climb, and I would still prefer to have us have a five-foot fence. I think it's just, you know, when you think about kids and what could happen, it makes me uncomfortable to have it be, we're basically reducing that standard as we update this code. So, just my two cents.
So, is there a consensus on that? Because I, we want to be able to come back with an ordinance that everybody supports here. So, getting a sense of how everybody feels about that. I think what we were trying to do is look at the insurance requirements, what other cities are doing. And we found that most cities had a four-foot. There was a couple that had five-foot fences. a couple that had five-foot fences, but I don't know if most cities were kind of going toward what the insurance companies are requiring for liabilities purposes and going that direction, trying to be consistent. But what is the sense of the commission on what you would like us to have?
I guess I, I don't mind the four-foot because I think about it also as a railing. Let's say there's a house near the river and, you know, there's standards for railing height and stuff like that. So I, I think about it, it's, you know, obviously we, we think about pools, we think about kids and, and water and drowning and all that scary stuff. And, but I think if it's, we're thinking about it in terms of just being fair standards across what a railing would prevent. So that, that's where my mind is, even though I, I hear what you're saying. So I'm, I guess I'm comfortable with it. That's where my head's at.
I think I'm also comfortable with the four-foot. I totally understand the point of five-foot as a little bit of an extra buffer or a layer there. I think when I think about it, I would prefer to still have some type of fencing requirement. I know that oftentimes people are going to opt to have some type of pool cover anyways, just like you had mentioned, to keep things warmer or to keep things clean. But there's so many backyards where kids are just running together and playing. And if you have that hard stop fence, it at least slows down the running where they can't just accidentally fall into the pool versus maybe having the cover on. Or if a family was out in the pool, they came in for lunch or for a few hours, they were intending to go back out, but there's that period of time where nobody's in the backyard. And then if a kid happens to come running through, they could potentially end up in the water. So I think if you have that hard stop buffer, I mean, I know that kids climb as well, but again, I think it's more of a stop there than hoping the cover is on and will catch the child.
Yeah, I think I'm okay with the direction of, of moving to a four-foot. Basically it'd be, for an in-ground pool, it'd either be a four-foot fence around the yard or you would have to have this automated safety cover, one or the other. And then with a above-ground pool, it's either you have a four-foot fence on your yard or you have a four-foot fence around the decking structure of that swimming pool. Correct? Just to recap. So I'm okay with that direction.
Well, and to clarify, too, the, the applicant or the, the person from Pool Tech is wanting to put a, a cover in addition to a four-foot fence in this instance, correct?
No. They would like an exemption from the fence requirement if there is this level of pool cover.
If you're asking about the specific case, yes, there is a four-foot fence on that property, but this, this will, this would apply to
Examples are?
Right. This would apply to all properties, whether they have a fence or not. So, so that's, that's the question.
I'm comfortable with what you're proposing, looking at the best practices and what the insurance companies are having in place. I'm comfortable with what you're proposing.
Maybe we can get a show of hands. People wanting, okay, are you okay with a four-foot requirement? Maybe just raise hands so we have a sense. Okay. All right. So we'll, we'll keep the ordinance proposed as is with that. Are people comfortable with the exemption being in place for the fence requirement if they have this automated pool cover that meets this international standard?
Can you just remind me again? I'm sorry. The, the key and all that concept, this must be initiated by the homeowner, correct? It's not like it'll know that no one's in the pool now, so I'm going to put a cover on. So
Correct. Yeah. It'd be initiated by, by the homeowner or whoever has the key to open or close the pool.
Do you have an idea of how much these systems cost?
A lot. No, the, the contractor told me that the, the one they were looking to install for their client was $30,000. So not, not cheap.
I think there's been a couple of people mentioning that they feel more comfortable with the fence and I'm on that board, too. I don't know if I like the exemption for the cover. I don't necessarily think there's anything that would control it to, to have to be latched. I think great example of, I'd intended to close it later on the cooler seasons and maybe at night I, I would close it. But when it's 85 degrees out, middle of the summer, I have no need to close it to keep my pool warm. So I, I think I'd feel more comfortable with the fence requirement still.
So maybe a show of hands, who is supportive of the exemption? Okay. Okay. So, so at the next meeting, you know, I think we were hoping to have Pool Tech come and make their case because they're the ones proposing this exemption. That's why they requested the code amendment and maybe Chris can reach out and make sure that they're here next time and so they can make their, make their case for it. Does that sound like a?
Okay.
But we can tell them that right now the commission is pretty
Because I understand how it would be safe if it's latched and secured, but
Yeah.
There's nothing forcing that to happen, so.
Yeah.
I, I would like to hear more about, are there inactivity sensors or time sensors that it will automatically close at, you know, 8:00 PM or 10:00 PM or, you know, additional safeguards other than just the key?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. I would say at least as the ordinance is written, you know, all of those features probably are not necessarily, you know, going to be required by us, but, but I'm sure the, the contractor, when they come to discuss it with the commission, may be able to talk about, you know, speak to some of that.
And we can write the ordinance anyway. We want to write the ordinance, right? So I guess the question is how comfortable the commission is with what's proposed and if we need to change it or leave that out or they haven't made their case or they have made their case and so.
Or describe the technology a little bit more further?
Right. Yeah. Yeah. We can have them do that, make their case for you.
Yeah. Because we can think of the other side, too, of when you don't want it to close. Maybe when there is, I'm, I'm sure there's, you know, provisions for that, too. But that would be another thing, you know, so we can think about both sides of it.
Okay. Anything else that you're so uncomfortable with that you, you know, I know Maggie, you suggested a couple of things. We like to keep the ordinance language simple and if we feel like it covers those things, we probably won't make it overly complicated. But talking about securing things, if we say it's a
Yeah, I, I think the setbacks and all that makes sense. It's just the question of is, are we comfortable with just a cover and not a fence? I think that's the, to me, that's what I feel like everybody's, I feel like most of the board is probably not comfortable with allowing an offense option.
Okay.
But I would also say that I never knew there was covers like this that an elephant could walk on and people could sit on. I did not know that they existed. So I, I, all I've seen is the ones that roll on top and what happens if a kid falls in the middle of it. I've seen that on a video, but not this. So, you know, I don't know.
I agree.
It seems like if I had a pool in my backyard, I would automatically put a fence up because I wouldn't want all the neighbors just wandering through the yard and jumping in the pool or doing whatever or, or deer. And, you know, this is a city that has a lot of wild animals running around.
I guess just to clarify my statement, Karen, I, the, really the two language things that I was wanting to clarify is just making sure that we spoke to going around the property and not just around the pool. At least when I read it, when, when it was a sent out in the packet, it just sounded like it needed to go on the pool versus clarifying that it go on the property. And then
It doesn't have to go around the whole property. Somebody could have a really giant yard
Saying either, sure. Just saying either or. It sounded like it needed to go around the pool.
If it went around the yard, you would need to have it.
Correct. Yeah.
A second fence, you're saying?
It's, it sounded like, at least the way that it was written to me, it sounded like it needed to go around just the pool versus like if you go around the pool or the property itself. You know what I mean?
Yeah. Like if I already had a fence around my whole backyard?
Yeah.
I wouldn't have to add another fence inside closer to the pool.
So what it says is it's enclosed within a fence. So I don't know
Okay.
Why that's not clear, but
Okay. Well, maybe
We'll look at the language again.
And then I guess the other thing I was just saying is, so maybe if that's clear, then the other point is just about the self-closing or self-latching or, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Sounds good. We'll, we'll look at the language again to make sure it's what it should be.
Okay. So any more questions for staff? Was there someone from the public that would like to speak to this item?
I would agree with the
You can come up to the mic, otherwise.
Yeah.
But you don't have to.
You don't have to if you don't want to speak. But you have an open mic if you'd like to.
They're all yours.
So we're still going to set a public meeting for this and then the petitioner should come in and educate us about the cover and, okay. All right.
Right. And then if you, if, if you're not satisfied with the language we proposed, based on what, what happens at the meeting, you can continue the public hearing and we can tweak the language a little bit. We can bring it back again. So, but we'll try to make some of the changes that you have suggested here and then maybe we'll bring maybe two different options and then you guys can choose. Because it seems to be like the fence versus the cover thing is the big, big issue. And then we'll try to address a couple of the things that Maggie had talked about. That way we won't have to, you can choose either or.
I just, I wonder, too, if there's, if there'd be a difference if, say I had a two-acre lot as opposed to a 80-foot by 130-foot lot. I could see if I had a two-acre lot and I was facing the woods and I wasn't anywhere near anybody else necessarily that I'd be like, why am I putting this fence around the whole lot when, you know, I would rather have this option. But maybe there needs to be something in there that
I think that's why you were saying it's more vague, right? As long as it's fenced around it, we don't, you don't care where the fence lies.
Well, but maybe I don't even want a fence if I have two acres and, you know, I'm overlooking the river, for example, and I don't want to put this fence up to block my view and I want this pool back there on top of the hill and the next neighbor's 1,000 feet away, you know. So, so that's maybe, you know, I don't know if, I know like outbuildings if you have a
It's hard to write, it's hard to write an ordinance that was anticipate every situation.
Right.
That would be pretty complicated. Where do you set that threshold? What's the size of the lot? I mean, there's all these factors. And so I guess trying to decide and like Maggie said, you know, the fence just has to be enclosed the pool so they can have the rest of their lot be all open, you know, if you have a really large lot.
Right.
Maybe it's just around your cabana and your, your deck or whatever for your pool and that's the, the secured part of it and the rest of it's all open or whatever. But
Right.
I mean, we have to set the threshold, we have to know where to set the thresholds and it's, you know, we, we don't want to get overly complicated or over, over-regulate things. We're trying to keep it simple, but so.
All right.
All right. Any more questions or comments? I would move to set a public hearing for April 9th.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Does this recall, a roll call vote?
I think it doesn't need to be a roll call.
All right. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right, that motion carries and that will be on the agenda for April 9th. Is there any commission updates for tonight?
I do not have any commission updates for tonight.
All right. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right, the meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a great night. Thank you.